Conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is October 1st, 2025, and the time is 6:06 PM. We'll call.
Jason Daly.
Here.
John Hurt.
Here.
Nicole Hansen.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
He did ask to be excused.
Mike Parsons. Mayor Shai.
Here. You have a quorum. The allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report, the city accountability audit, which is performed by the Washington, Washington State for the 2023 to 2024 fiscal years begins October 13th. Kristen already had an initial meeting with them last week, and I think there was another email that came in today about follow-up meetings. Is that, is that correct? And so we're well on our way to getting that going. We just did this two years ago, and we passed with flying colors. And so nothing, nothing's changed, so I have no doubt that it'll be, it'll be great again. McPartman Murphy, Part Grant, Drayton Archaeology is, has completed the fieldwork, and they're putting the draft report together right now. In fact, it just showed up in my inbox today, and they're asking me to look through it first before they get it submitted to RCO for review. So that's, that's happening. Jail painting, thank you to the service family and the other volunteers that helped out for organizing and getting that project going. You can see that it's already, it's already looking better out there. So thank you to them. Water system receivership, the county has not yet responded to our request for an extension for the current agreement that extend, ends at the end of this year. That said, it's not slowing us down on working on receivership on our own. Concerts at McMurphy, Friends of Little Falls, they had a concert last weekend on September 27th. I was there. It was amazing. Lots of folks showed up. It was a lot of fun, great music. So thank you for the volunteers for making that concert happen. I know some of the council members were there as well, so lots, lots of people showed up. Public Works, various stormwater and street improvement product, projects are in progress through the rest of this month. We did rental excavator for a very good deal, and you'll see that out on close to C Street right now. I think that's where it's still at, why they, why they work on some stormwater and drainage issues over there. Some of the homeowners over there were having, for years have been having issues with water under their houses and stuff. And so we're working in our right of ways to try to mitigate that and help those folks out. Parks Board, they're gonna have a special meeting tomorrow night. At their last Parks Board meeting, there was a part of the, was it the Parks Master Plan or part of the Comprehensive Plan? Or I guess they're one and the same.
Parks Master.
Yeah. They didn't quite get to, to coming up with a recommendation on that for council and planning committee. So they're gonna get there tomorrow night and, and hopefully have a recommendation to pass along to the other boards. And then, of course, Planning Committee is, is next week on October 8th, the regular meeting. Any council reports?
I'd like to report that I did talk to the mayor of Castle Rock about borrowing or using their speed box that they sit alongside the road, slow people down. So that, I did reach out to him, so I haven't heard back yet, but he was gonna talk to his, the road guys and see when they're not using it or what, what that would look like for us.
Well, thank you for working on that.
I talked to a couple of sheriffs down at the concert the other night, and they were hitting 506 in 7th Street in the AM when a lot of the traffic is speeding up, up and down the road. So the patrol in that, in the AMs.
They haven't been up by our house at all.
They were the other day.
No, I did it at 6:07. They've not been up there.
They were the other day because I drove right by them.
Not on I Street. Not, they're not parking on I Street. Where are they parking?
They're, they're parking right down at the bottom of the hill. And just like Ruben told you last time that you were in here.
G Street or?
No, on, on the 506. If you're coming down the hill.
Yeah.
They're sitting right down, down towards the bottom there. And they were sitting there the other morning when I, when I went out on a run.
Down by the county, down by the Vader shed.
Oh, way down there.
Not way down there.
They can catch that all of it from there.
And like he says, their lasers can go from the top of the hill all the way down to the tracks. So.
And this morning, I saw Washington State Patrol out checking out that abandoned car.
They towed it away.
They got, they got rid of it today. Yeah. So they were out there today looking at it. So things are happening. Other council reports? Okay. Agenda approval. I don't have any suggestions or changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for October 1st, 2025.
A motion by Mr. Daly to approve the agenda for October 1st. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hurt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for September 7th, 2025, as written.
A motion by Mr. Daly to approve the minutes for September 17th. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hurt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'm making a motion that we approve the mandate end of September 2025, $42,952.17, and beginning on October 2025, $10,074.80.
A motion by Mr. Hurt to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Daly. Any discussion on the vouchers? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special report, Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
Oh, Ruben.
Good morning.
Wasn't supposed to stand.
Yeah, it's a little bit of an angle, isn't it?
Yeah.
For the month of September, 294 citizen contacts, six on-shift calls, 17 traffic stops, two infractions, 52 hours worked. Total calls 13. Anybody have any questions or?
And thank you for being at the concert. I know there was a little bit of action. There was, there was a medical issue there. So it was great that you guys were on site to help with that response.
And as far as the month of October, there aren't any concerts scheduled, right?
No.
That's, that's your last one.
And as far as the Friday nights, any issues with car clubs or racers or anything like that? Have they been pretty much behaving themselves? I haven't, haven't heard a whole lot from the guys. They said they've been pretty calm.
Yeah, and I've, I've been down there at a number of them. I know Mr. Ferguson has been down there at a number of them. And so we, and then it's been, they're a great group. They're, they're being responsible and having a good time.
And just a comment, yes, there have been guys scheduled for just early morning hours. And we're just bouncing between the days, trying to vary from day to day, from week to week. So trying to be a little unpredictable for people.
And you sit down by the shed, down by the city?
It's up to the deputy to sit and patrol wherever they're at at that time. A lot of times they sit in an area, they have good coverage on 506, move, they move, sometimes they'll hide. Depends on who's running, and sometimes traffic's just not speeding. It's up to those guys to figure out. But the radar's gonna work from, literally, you can go from both directions all the way through town.
How do you know which car it is? Like if you're sitting downtown, how do you know which car you're getting?
It's the black one.
No, the red ones are.
It's the second one.
I mean, is there a way to tell?
Well, if I'm running my laser, I can put a red on your license plate.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Really? It'll read the license plate that far away?
Well, I mean, as far as my radar, my laser, it'll go out 1,900 feet.
No, they bounce it off your license plate.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
As far as the, a lot of the mobile mounted ones, it just picks up the fastest moving car, and it'll can show the different speeds of different vehicles. So a lot of times, there's not multiple cars. You have single cars going to speed, or you have a group of ignoring speed. And then depends on the dynamic.
So Ruben, out there on the 506 going towards the highway, that's WSP, isn't it?
The state highway, yeah. But county guys can't do traffic stops and stuff.
Dwight and I were going out one morning, and we had a guy in a white minivan pass us on a double white in a curb, and then he was passing everybody on the double yellow.
If you got a cell phone, call it in, let us know. It's like, hey, this person's driving erratically. Sometimes we'll have complaints. For instance, like if someone's driving erratically through Napvile Vine, and it just flies through Napvile Vine, Napvile PD look for them, they can't find them, and then we'll get a complaint on 603, and then we're gonna complain down in Vader. And it's like, okay, we know where the vehicles kind of at, and we're trying to, trying to catch them, but we can't get to them in time because he is driving erratically.
I thought for sure he was gonna kill somebody.
But yeah, if someone's really driving recklessly like that, but it's not. Because sometimes we're, we're looking for them, and we don't know where to go because the county's so big.
Officer Ruben, could you have your guys call and check in with Cindy when they come into town?
Yes, I'm up.
Just shine your bright light right through the front of the house and like, you know.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, moving on to public comment. Any members of the public have any comments? Mr. Cliff?
I just want to know that you're actually going to get ahold of me at some point soon. I mean, it has been two weeks. I haven't heard from you. I haven't heard from Darren. I don't expect to hear from James. So I just want to know where we're at on subdivision.
Absolutely, yeah. And as I said before the meeting, I have two meetings that I'm gonna bring it up at tomorrow that are scheduled with engineer and I don't even know what title to give the other place. So, yep, I have already started talking to city staff about it, and I have some conversation with consultants tomorrow. Yep. Any other members of the public have any comments tonight? In the room, online? Okay, moving on to city business. I don't know when. Council to consider resolution 10-2025, the Lewis County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Lewis County has been working on their hazard mitigation plan for at least a year. And I think we've seen parts of it here and there over that time. Vader's portion of the hazard mitigation plan is, I think there's one page on page, like 180 or something of this document that talks about Vader. And we've had some face-to-face meetings with the county. The county is an emergency management team on what Vader's resources were and what our specific hazards could be that are special just to our city. And so that's all in this plan. You could consider this plan kind of like emergency management's version of a comprehensive plan. They have to update it every so often. And so this is the culmination of that. And so it just needs Vader's approval so that the county and all of the other cities as well, so that the county can get it submitted.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 10-2025 for our Lewis County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
A motion by Mr. Daly to approve Resolution 10-2025. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hurt. Any other discussion about this? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 10-2025, Lewis County Hazard Mitigation Plan, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 07-2025, the 40-foot street right-of-way standards. We've talked about having a 40-foot right-of-way standard for a while. That first came up when we were discussing potentially taking F Street South back and making it a city road. One of the things our engineer brought up at the time was that right-of-way is, is narrow. And the city only had street standards for like 20-foot private roads and street standards for 60-foot right-of-ways and 80-foot right-of-ways and 100-foot right-of-ways. And so there was, there was no street standard for a 40-foot. And part of the Hendrickson development, they actually want to use a 40-foot street standard. And as we've said, we've been talking about having a standard like this for three years now. And so we got taken care of. It's available for your review. It's just a single sheet that shows a 40-foot wide road, the right-of-way with sidewalks and 26 feet of, of roadway. So pretty, pretty basic. So that's the history and why we're doing it. And so are there any question, other questions about this?
I have a question. But they, we're going for.
Miss you, Parsons. Go ahead, Ms. Parsons.
I thought they were going for a 30-foot. Cause that's what F Street is.
Right. And so, well, one of the things the engineer wanted back, back then was that he felt 30-foot was too wide, and then to have a 40-foot. And so this at least gets us closer to that. Obviously, we're not taking F Street back anytime soon. And so it was just good for the city to have this on record, so it's ready to go. And then also, one of the developers were wanting, wanting to use a 40-foot standard, and the city didn't have one. So.
Okay.
Did you say 30-foot was too wide, so they wanted a 40? I don't understand.
40 wider.
Yeah, so on F, on F Street, a few years ago, when we were discussing this, you know, one of the things the property owners had an issue with was that, you know, a lot of the homes and fences and landscaping is already really close to the gravel F Street. And even though our right-of-way was, used to be wider, obviously now that it's been inundated with all that. And so one of the things the engineer was recommending was that to do a 40, to eventually move towards a 40-foot right-of-way through there. That way, over the years, as development changed in the area, we could actually have a proper width road through there. So you could have sidewalks, sidewalks on both sides and things like that. And so that was, that was why we were looking at a 40-foot versus a 30-foot. Just because, you know, even at, even at the 40-foot standard, if you were to look at that, you can see there's two 13-foot wide ride, or travel lanes, two five, and then there's curb and gutter, and then two five-foot sidewalks, and then I think it was a foot and a half on each side for, for lighting. I think this is how the 40-foot breaks apart. And so if you say, let's do 30 feet instead, what are you cutting out? What are you probably cutting out? All of the sidewalks and so. And obviously, right now, we're not building sidewalks, but someday, somebody probably will. And it's good for the city to be prepared.
This is Nicole. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is this for the entire city or just one street?
This is just a, a standard. And so we'd have, so the city would have a list of options, and then a developer could say, I, if I'm gonna build, if I need a 40-foot street, this is Vader's standard to make that happen. And so.
Okay, so for example, I, so for example, I had my property surveyed professionally last year, and I was shocked that there was a 30-foot right-of-way already. And I asked him if he thought that was reasonable. And he said, yes, on a road as wide as D Street, a 30-foot right-of-way is reasonable, but probably wouldn't be wider. For someone like me, a 40-foot right-of-way would take out my driveway, and I wouldn't have space to park my car. So I'm not very comfortable with a 40-foot right-of-way as a general standard. I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think a 30-foot right-of-way seems reasonable.
It's a 40-foot total. So it wouldn't be 40-foot from the center of the road on you. It would be 20 feet. It, it all goes off the center of the road.
I think D Street, isn't it as big as it can get already?
Yeah, so this, so maybe there's some confusion.
So why would, wait, I heard Mike Parsons, so why would we go narrower than if we currently have? I'm confused why we would go narrower. This is implying we're going narrower? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think, I think there's some confusion here. So the city has a list of, the city has a list of, let's call them templates of different types of streets. And so if you're gonna build an 80-foot street, a development would use this standard. If you're gonna build a 60-foot, you'd use this standard, and so on and so forth. This does not change anything that already exists. This would just be a new standard to have on file, so that if a development came in and they needed to build a 40-foot road, and the city approved that, of the fact that a 40-foot road was appropriate for that, they would use this standard. So it doesn't change any of these.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Thank you. Got it. Yep. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep, it just adds another pre-made template that the city would have on file. When if someone says, I need a 40-foot road, what does the city want? And we pull this out, and we say, this is what you build.
Perfect. Thank you.
Developer comes up and tells us what they want to build, and then we approve it. So if Jerry came up and said, I want a 30-foot, we would approve a 30-foot for. Or should we make it a standard from the state forward that all developments are at the 40-foot instead of at the 30-foot? Because then you got this road that's 30-foot, you got this road that's 40-foot, you got this road that's 80-foot.
It really depends on the situation. So for instance, on the, on the, the small seven-home development that's going in right now, they're doing the work up there. They were trying to figure out what kind, what to do. And they decided to go with a private road, which allowed them to do as small as 20 feet. We have like a 20-foot standard.
No sidewalk.
Right. And so that kind of thing. Although I think there is gonna be sidewalks and stuff up there. But, and so it really just depends on the situation. Like, for instance, if it's, if it's a main connector, let's say like D Street, or because of all the, the traffic, or 9th Street or something, it would, 60, 80 feet is more appropriate. And the city would never, would never let someone build a 40-foot right-of-way or 40-foot street on a road that was gonna be a major connector. And so we would have to look at the individual situation and say whether this was correct or not. One of the things for subdivisions, a lot of times is a traffic study. And so if, if they're gonna create a lot of extra traffic, obviously, the traffic study would say, this 40-foot road would not be appropriate. You know, for one, well, on 40-foot, you can't really even park, park on this, on, on the street. Because if you have a 13-foot travel lane on each side, and you park an eight-foot car on the, or truck on the side, suddenly you can't park. And so, and so it's appropriate for certain situations and not others. In this case, with the 100 Hendrickson development, assuming they even, they even need this, it would be the new, the new portion of 11th Street. So 11th Street between D and E does not exist. There is a right-of-way though. And so this would be a narrow, relatively narrow, short road that would connect D and E, and it's not for major traffic. It's just for a bypass. Mr. Cliff?
Is the Hendrickson one the one by the mansion, south of the window?
Oh, I know where that is. That is it. Between D and E, down, down south, yeah.
And that's the one that wants to put in the 30-foot or 40?
So it would be, they originally wanted to go, go, go much narrower, and the city recommended it be wider, which is the 40-foot. And that would be the 11th between D and E. That is, that's the way their plans are drawn up now.
And at least it allows two vehicles.
Absolutely.
Instead of just our regular.
Yep. Yeah, it's two 13-foot travel lanes plus sidewalks. Yep.
And you put in seven?
That's a lot wider than F, or than 10th Street.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's actually wider than a number of our streets.
That really should be ours.
Um, you asked the number of homes. I believe that current plan is eight down there. So it's, it's been, it's been greatly reduced. Yep.
So with all that said, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 07-2025 to add standards for a 40-foot right-of-way.
A motion by Mr. Daly to approve ordinance 07-2025. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Hurt. And, and just for reference, all of our urban design standards, including all of the street standards, are on the city website. If you go to municipal reference documents, you can go in there, and you can see all the different chapters, everything from streets to lighting. Everything is there. And you can, you can look at those other street standards if, if you wanted to. But yeah, all, all of the, the things that we would request of a developer if they were to build are on the city website. So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 07-2025, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's get into some fun stuff here. Number three, council to consider trunk-or-treat application. There is a group of volunteers that want to, as in previous years, have an annual trunk-or-treat Halloween event, and they do it on the sidewalk in the, in the, in the parking area downtown. And so they're asking for approval of their application. Are there any other details that we should include, Kristen?
Are we waiving any fees?
Yes, let be waiver if possible. They're also asking for use of the city barricades to block the streets, and they're asking for the street to be closed. I believe at 5 o'clock, their application said, Friday, they're asking to close it.
That's A Street.
Yes. Between the highway and.
I think it's, that's a great thing. Kids love it. It's been a great turnout. So I, we need a motion for this?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the application for the trunk-or-treat on A Street as written.
A motion by Mr. Daly.
Second.
The trunk-or-treat application, and we have a second from Mr. Parsons. So that is some excitement there. Yeah, no, this is, this is well-attended. I mean, I know the, the people that are down there, and they're, they're participating on the, on the trunk side of things. I know those adults and, and kids that do that have a good time. And then a lot of the, the attendees have a blast as well. It's, it's.
Is it actually Halloween also?
It is. And 31st is a Friday night, correct?
Yeah.
So.
Cool.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'd recommend all the council members participate and have, have a, have a decorated booth or trunk available. It's a lot of fun.
I think the council members should have a costume contest.
Ooh.
I'll dress up as Parsons. You'd have to put on a different costume.
Yeah.
I know I've ordered a, a new lab coat already, so I'm getting prepared. All right, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving the trunk-or-treat application, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, council to discuss code enforcement service options from Fourleaf Incorporated. So at the direction of the council, and something we've all been wanting for a while, we started doing some research to see if there are private companies that are available for code enforcement services. And after talking with a state agency, they recommended a couple of different companies. This was the first one that reached out to us, and they sent us a statement of qualifications for us to review. It also had a price sheet. And so tonight, I'm not looking for a, a motion or anything, but just trying to open a discussion and see what your thoughts. And if you have any questions that I could relay back to the, to Fourleaf, as, as, as we get closer to the end of the year, I think the best option would be to include this, if this is something that we wanted to do in the New Year's budget. That way, we could budget appropriately for these services at the, at the level that, that we need. And so we've got, we've got time to talk about this.
I'm sorry, I missed her. Did you say we have competitive bids or only one?
We don't have bids. We have the statement of qualifications. And so, and so with engineering services such as this, we don't necessarily get bids. What we get is kind of a, a list of qualifications. And then this, the city would choose a company based on quality. And then this, the city would choose a company based on qualifications. And after that, do negotiations on prices. So it's not the same as building a building.
So then do we have, yeah, I know what you're talking about. So do we have multiple SOQs or only one?
Do we only have the one so far? And so definitely we'd want to get a, a second opinion or a second option, excuse me. But we want to go and include this in here so people could get, get an idea and maybe come up with questions if we start soliciting other ones on, on what are, what an E.
Awesome. Well, I, I really appreciate everyone's effort to, to get these in here for us because I know it's important to a lot of the team in the city. So thank you.
And, and, you know, I talked to the, the, one of the representatives and he was very, very customer-oriented. You know, one of the things they could do is, you know, the city could pick, say, four hours a week or four hours every other week. And then they would send a, someone down and they would, they would work on whatever needs that, that we had. And so we could kind of custom-build a, kind of a budget around that and, and get the services we need. Pretty flexible.
Yeah, that's section five. It breaks down the hourly rate.
Yeah, I'm curious as to what puts us into each one of these different categories though, like.
That's a good question.
That's how, and they're four-hour increments, minimum four-hour increment billing. So it's like, you know, which, which, you know, so I guess that's.
Yeah, so on a, kind of a good question would be on a, on a, on a, on a week-to-week basis, you know, which one of those?
Personnel.
Yeah, which one of those people would we be dealing with that would be primarily?
Is it depending on what code we're working with or how far along in the process it is?
Yep. Well, that's a good question. What else?
That's the only thing that I was worried about, of course, is money.
Money.
How much do you think this is going to add to the budget?
Um, Jason, we had that there. What's kind of the lowest hourly rate?
$85.
$85 a minimum four-hour increments. So when, when I brought, when I brought it up to the council, we were suggesting maybe eight hours a week to start off with, to see how, how it goes. So.
We don't even know if that's how they work though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, if they came, like, one day a week, they came in, you know, and say on Wednesdays or whatever, they came into, they came to town for a four-hour period. Even once a week, that would be a lot, right? Vader's not that big. We probably don't even need once a week.
But we do have a lot of claim.
But maybe every other week and so on. So now you're talking $400 every other week.
But this is, this isn't just a guy driving around town. This is a guy that has to do stuff, paperwork.
They do, yeah, they handle everything. They handle all the paperwork. They do, they do, they.
An hour of work here in town might be three hours of, you know.
Yeah. And one of the things they said is that, you know, they, they specialize in this. And one of the things they're always worried about is confrontation, right? They want, ideally people would, would voluntarily comply, right? And so if they, you know, so they will actually talk to the people that are having, that are having the, the, whatever the issue is that we're, that we're seeing and, and give them solutions and, and try to get compliance without having fees and, and things like that. And so it was, it was nice to hear, you know. And so one of the things, you know, our city staffs had issues with is, you know, who's going to go and get face-to-face with these folks? And who is going to go and, you know, if there is, you know, take pictures and go on the property if they need to and all, all of these things, different things, you know. And that's, that's touchy. These folks are, this is what these folks do.
It's touchy. We're neighbors, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, these folk, this is what these folks do, right? This, this particular company, they do it every day. They know the rules, they know the laws, they know what they can do and can't do. And so very, it's a very good thing. I think it's a good, good direction.
Where are they based out of?
They're up north. I think their office was in Tacoma. They have a number of cities that they work with and they did not have an issue with, with Vader or where we were at at all.
But does the time start when they leave their office? Or does the time start when they get in town?
I don't know.
It says, oh. It does not say here.
The time works between.
Says when time work begins is when the work time begins. That's how I'd understand it when they get to here.
All right. We'll find, we'll find out about that as well.
So do we have a meeting scheduled with them to talk this over?
I didn't. Nope, nope. We were just going to talk about this and I was going to get ahold of the representative. Her name's Alex. And get our questions answered.
I think we should move forward on it for sure. I'd like, I'd like to have some, some feedback from her and get some.
Good dialogue.
Dialogue.
Yeah. Yeah, this is something, I, I invited her to the meeting tonight, but unfortunately she was traveling and so she wasn't able to attend. But I'm sure sometime in the future here, we could, we could probably have a.
Like to kind of get a feel of how they.
You guys could talk to them, talk to her in person. So, okay, any other questions on this? Seems like this is the right direction and we should probably get a second statement of qualifications from another company if we could too. So we have something for reference for comparison. Anything else?
And the only thing that, yeah, I was going to say, the only thing I'd like to add is, you mentioned the budget and I know we're going to start budget conversations next week or in the coming month. So I think irrespective of which company we choose, we should probably start thinking about putting this into the budget for next year or having that conversation.
Sure. Yeah. We have a code enforcement line, line item in the budget already for, for whether it's legal code enforcement issues or, you know. And so, and so we could definitely make sure that that is properly funded. We can, we can certainly make some estimates based on what we know already. Good idea.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic tonight?
It, it would be nice if code enforcement funded itself, like it originally was intended to do.
Yeah, probably some of the bigger issues might do that. It just really depends on, on the individual situation and if people, you know, push back, right?
Even if they don't, even if it don't fund itself, it's going to slowly make our city more valuable.
More generable to some, some.
Yeah, and more.
Through these new houses that are coming into town, you know.
Yeah, and this is a very, this is, I, I know it's, obviously they do, they, they work with other cities. But, you know, in my, in my dealings with other local cities and small cities in the county and in the area, no one else does this. And so this would be privately, privately contracting out code enforcement.
Well, my question is, we're in a situation now where we sent four letters out, registered letter to a certain person. And now we have to talk to our certain city attorney to find out what our next step is. If we hire these people, do they get ahold of our attorney? Or they do, they do all? That'd be a question.
They said that they would, they would do it all, but of course it'd be in our direction. And so, you know, I, from my feeling is I would want before, I'm, I'm sure this is probably the way it works, but I, I would not want them taking any, any legal action without running it by us first, right? And so, you know, I don't, I, I don't, I don't foresee them being, picking on people with grass that's eight inches long instead of six inches. But, you know, that's, that's an extreme example, but, you know, just, you know, let's do this smartly and.
For sure, if they had the opportunity, they'd drive around, write everything down and give us a list of things that they found.
Which ones are, do we really think we want to do? Which, which ones are, are okay for later and which ones are not okay? So, yep.
Six inches, just so we're clear, is way too long.
Okay, I'm sorry. A shorter length for your mic. All right, any other discussion on, on this? If you have any other questions, please let us know. But I'll, I'll be probably reaching out to them tomorrow with some of this stuff. Okay, moving on to the last topic of city business. Council to discuss adding a prayer to the beginning of the council meetings. I think that came up at the last, at the last meeting. And so, and it was asked, so we had this to the agenda. And so I'll open the floor to, or council members thought that it's something that was important.
Well, my thought is, we've, we've dealt with this before in the past. We used to have a prayer during the council meeting. And we decided that it was a turn off to some of our, our community that didn't want to be a part of it. And that was one of our main reasons for not doing it anymore. We did offer the people that did want to pray to come in early and perform a prayer before or to stay after, invite people to stay after and perform a prayer, but not to do it within the meeting. And so that's, that's where I, I still stand with that. That's, I'm still not wanting to pray during our meeting. But I understand that people want to. So if they want to, like I said before, after, I think that that would be the most appropriate time to do that. That's my view.
Anybody else?
Well, I know if you look at your major house representatives and, and your senators, when they meet and stuff and have their meetings, they, they always have a prayer at the beginning of the year. You know, I've seen it where they, they did it for the year. I have no problem with having it at the beginning of the meeting. Or like Jason said, you know, if people wanted to stay and pray after or do it before. I think prayer works miracles myself. In a situation that we're in these days, this country needs a lot of prayer.
Though the, so the country does need a lot of prayer. The, the whole idea of you can stay and pray afterwards. So this is one of my thought on that. It goes along with a little story about a guy working on a roof. And he slipped and he started falling and he started praying. And as he was falling, his belt got hooked on a nail. And he stopped and he said, oh, never mind, Lord, I got it taken care of. Thanks a lot. So we need the Lord with us so that we can make these decisions for our community, not after the meeting when it's all over. We need the guidance of the Holy Spirit in our meetings.
Let me just show what I have found on from the separation of church and state exists because the founders of the United States and later the courts, interpreting the Constitution, believe that religious freedoms require both freedom of religion and freedom from government-imposed religion. And I feel like that would be imposing religion on people. I, I mean, I, I feel everyone has their own views of the Lord or whoever they pray to. And I believe people pray differently. And I believe that's a personal thing.
So based on the, the multiple comments, I like to bring everybody's opinions together if I can. So Mike would like it before. And it sounds like Jason would like it potentially outside of city business. So, Mr. Parsons, if it was before the meeting, but not in city business, would that fulfill your request as well?
Well, the way that we, the way that we used to do it, and quite frankly, when I joined the city council eight years ago, it was the, it was either prayer and then pledge of allegiance or pledge of allegiance prayer. I don't remember exactly how, but it was at the beginning of the meeting. And I was super excited that that was still going on. You know, our schools used to do the pledge of allegiance every morning and they don't even do that anymore at all of them. And so I think that we do, as one of my shirts says, make, make America holy again. And the more we keep the Lord out of it, He's the one that makes these things happen. So. But I voted, I voted to keep it the last time. And I just thought that the state, the world's in, we need it more now, now more than ever. So I just thought I'd bring it up again.
Wasn't that kind of like the pledge of allegiance that we do at the beginning of our council meeting? You know, some people stand, some people will sit, some people put their hand over their heart, some people don't. You know? And, and the other question that I would have, if you were going to have it for the, the beginning of the council, is who leads it? Are we going to have different pastors from the different churches in town come and do it? Like they do in the, the bigger houses? Or is it you, me, Mike, or whoever?
Whoever wants to say the prayer. I don't, I mean, it's not a, this, this country was formed by God and, and that's who we're praying to. So whoever wants to pray to Him, however they want to pray to Him.
I have displayed a council meeting minutes from December 4th, 2014, for those of you online in the room. We actually did prayer after a roll call, but before the pledge of allegiance. That's, that's where the city, where the city historically did it, just, just for reference. That was actually before you were on the council, Mr. Parsons?
Oh, yeah. It went, it was before I was on council for a while. And then.
It was very churchy. Anyway, that's, 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 that's where I stand. I, I'm, I'm going to stick to my guns about keeping it outside of the gavel.
Well, I wish Mr. Ferguson was here so he could lend his opinion.
I got a suggestion to make it easy for Jason, which I respect what he's saying and I respect what Mike's saying. Instead of having an open prayer, have a moment of silence where the people that want to pray can pray, you know, to themselves for the meeting and stuff. And they continue on with their meeting. I, I think that would benefit, you know, everybody that's here and everybody that's on the council. You know, give, give them a minute to say their prayers to themselves. If they don't want to pray, then sit here for a minute. What's your thoughts on that, Mike?
That's fine. I mean, at least there's a minute to acknowledge a greater power than the five of us.
This is just discussion.
Well, if someone wanted to make a motion to, to, to do that, we, we, we could. Or we could also wait until we heard back from Mr. Ferguson's opinion as well. But.
I, I think it has to be.
Ms. Hanson, you were.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to kind of second what John said. I really appreciate all of the perspectives that are in this call. And I just want to say thank you to this group of individuals for having such a respectful conversation around this topic. I think this is an incredible representation of what a government conversation should look like around tough topics. So I just want to say that I'm really impressed with us tonight. Way to go.
Thanks, Agul.
Well, I can't, I can't get mad at Jason. Well, I can't, I can't get mad at Jason. He's got the best food in town.
Yeah.
With my respect for.
Yeah, he'd sit on your hot dog or something next time you go down the road, so.
So I agree. I like the moment of silence. I think that is a great way to incorporate everyone. And I'm also happy to wait until Mr. Ferguson can land.
But I think we should table it, and, and all five agree on it or disagree on it. But I do believe Ferguson needs to be a part of this, because it's one of the biggest things that we're going to, in my opinion, that we'll ever vote on, you know.
Okay.
Agreed.
Do we, so do we want to table this until the next meeting, and then get Mr. Ferguson's opinion as well?
Yep.
Yes, that's the consensus. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I got four yeses. Sounds great. Thank you, everybody. All right. End of city business. Elected official comments. Any comments from elected officials?
I did forget to mention some stuff on the council. But I talked to the mayor again also about, he mentioned one time about the, the Vader, our Vader shed, how cramped and stuff it is, and how, why we haven't ever asked the Kasserach School District to rent the hay barn at Schoolhouse.
Which, which shed is small?
The, where we keep the truck and the tractor and all the implements. And so he was just making a suggestion that, you know, if we needed more room, that that would be a good place to go. And is there any, I don't know, I, I kind of see the need sometimes for a line down D Street, because it's so big and wide, and people are driving down the middle of it all the time. But I was just going to mention that to see if anybody else had any comments about putting a line on maybe a street in Vader.
Striping the roads.
Striking a road.
That's crazy.
Yeah, and it's wide enough to put a stripe down the middle of it. So, I don't know.
Okay.
Do we have any stripes in town?
Um, the county did Ananen.
Yeah, Ananen, a.
Oh, oh, and they did that when they.
Yeah.
Is that one lot?
Yeah.
Okay, we can look at that. I know county has capability of striping, and we have an interlocal agreement with them for maintenance. And so maybe we could reach out to them, and they could just come in and stripe it in a proper manner. See how much that would cost.
Soon, we're going to have that housing development at the end of the street, too. So I think there'll be a lot more, larger traffic. Just a thought.
Okay. I love those types of things, the little things that.
Make our city look like a city.
Well, and then.
Pines on our trees.
Little improvements as we go. I mean, probably, maybe you've noticed that on D and Ninth, you know, there always accumulated water right there on the corner. And, you know, you've noticed in the rains here this week, we don't have water there. When they did the water line project.
A big mud puddle.
We took advantage of them having the road open. And John and Darren went out, and they installed a stormwater collection basin, collection basin there on the corner. And we, and we ran stormwater line over to the west side of Ninth there into the ditch. And now we don't have water there anymore, after all these years. So the little things like that, they, they, they add up, so.
Don't they have to come back and stripe the fog line on Seventh Street there, where they did all the work?
I'm sure they would, if they have, they haven't already. It would be part of their agreement. And you can bet the site's going to be affirm if they didn't do that.
Okay, so the west side I went.
Okay.
Anyway.
One thing, the schoolyard up there, you know, I see people using it, walking their dogs and stuff. But I was told that there, in that back corner, there's a baseball diamond up there.
Well, there is a backstop and, and the remains of some seating areas for dugouts. There, it's still there. It's in extreme disrepair.
So can we get a hold of the Kasserach School and get?
I think they've given it to us. I think they said that we could have it at one point.
Well, so we've had some discussions with the new superintendent, and he is looking for suggestions for the entire property on how it could benefit the city while it still remains in the school district's possession. And that was what he was saying. He was talking about soccer fields, and then actually having teams come and, and play here in the city. That way, you have people coming in, and they're using the facilities, and it's a great field. And so, you know, he, I know he was, he was looking at, at ways, at ways for that.
I think it'd be awesome for the.
Donate it to the city?
Well.
It's part of the school property, and they do use it as overflow, like for practices and things like that. That's what I always thought would be great.
Yeah, baseball field's kind of fairly high maintenance. And so who's going to, who's going to take care of that, you know?
But they got six of them down there in Kasserach. They have the, the people.
Yeah. And that, well, I think that, that's a, that's a nonprofit that runs all of those. And they have fundraisers and, and their own, and they have their own budgets and things like that. And so there's a, there's a, a big infrastructure to maintain those baseball fields. Yeah.
So is that something that we can get together with our park commission and work something out with, with them to get, to get the volunteers and stuff to get in there and clear it out? So our kids have someplace to go.
It'd be a lot less bureaucratic if we just put one in at the park down there, along Ananen Road, right there at the top, with a little.
What if, what if the city was to get that property, and then we do the, like we were, like Joe, like me and you were talking about, I think it was me and you that was talking about it, put in a, a community center slash swimming pool.
Right there in that corner.
City hall, all of that right down there in a big building.
I love that idea.
Jason, it's like, I brought this up, the property.
Giant Vader Civic Center.
Which?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you get started on that.
How do you get?
Yeah, we did talk about that. There's a lot of people have had dreams about stuff like that. I'm not sure if the school district is interested in getting rid of it just yet. And then if they were, how would we, how would we go about acquiring it? But like I said, the superintendent was looking at ways to, to utilize that, that property for the benefit of the city. And so I, it's actually, I haven't heard from him since before the summer. And so I should see if he's come up with any new ideas since then.
I think that a community center with a community pool would be amazing, that the high school from, what?
Oh, I just giggled. I'm sorry.
Oh, with, with a, a lap pool in it also, that the high schools could come and practice in, instead of driving all the way up to Chehalis or down to Longview to do their swimming. That would be center. We could charge the schools. We could bring swim meets in. I think that it's just.
You could go do your morning aerobics in it.
Yes. Oh, yeah. Water aerobics. I'd be there all, every day.
Can I ask one more, one more question? Is there any right-of-way on the side of Ananen Road to put in like a walking path for people to get to the park from the city without walking on the road? There's no shoulder. Maybe when we put the sewer pipe down that road, we could put in a sidewalk.
It is not really a right-of-way, because.
Because it's owned by the railroad.
By the railroad.
Right. So that's why I'd like.
They just kind of allow a road to be there. And so.
But it'd have to be on the left side of the road, because of the railroads over here. So is there any room over there between properties and the roadside?
It was, I'm not sure if it was, I'm not sure if it.
They won't let, I know they won't let us go towards the railroad.
Yeah, during the, during the comprehensive plan survey that hap, that happened in Mayday, one of the things that came up was walking paths to McMurphy. That was one of the things some, some residents brought up. And I think, I can't remember if it was the planners or someone else that had the idea of going up A Street, past, past Worden Park, because that right-of-way on A Street goes way up. And then there's, I think there's another right-of-way that cuts to the west towards the tracks. And the idea, the idea was, well, instead of having one that goes down, down to Ananen, have one that goes up a less busy road.
But without a crossing.
And then, and then have some type of crossing over the tracks directly to the park that way.
Like, like Naperville has, where they go over the.
So that was one of the, that was one of the, one of, one of the ideas. And then.
Walking span over railroad is huge. I mean, have you been across the one in Naperville? Have you ever walked across it?
No, but I know what you're talking about.
It, it's probably like a quarter of a mile long, because you got to go way up and then over, and then way back down, almost like a spiral on the other side to get back down. But, and then you're going over a road. I bet it's, I bet it's a half a million dollars to put in a walking bridge over.
Clama just got a grant to rebuild the one that goes from McMinniman's up into town, the town of Clama, right now. And it's $15 million or something. And it's going to have elevators and all kinds of things. So, but easiest way would just be to go under the tracks. Just put it up.
Hey, we got that cold.
Just go under the railroad tracks.
Anyway.
Come on, Grandma, crawl, crawl.
All would be tall.
If there, if there was, I mean, because people could walk down alongside 506 and cross the, at the crossing, and then get on a white walking path there somewhere, because people do drive way over the speed limit on that road. And I've seen the sheriff go down that road today at like 65. I was like, wow. They're after a motorcycle, anyway.
And we can look and see.
I think that's something that would greatly help, not only the use of that park for, but access for our community.
Yeah, yeah, and safety for.
Safety.
Put it down there. Okay. Anything else for elected official comments? Okay, there's no more. This meeting is adjourned at 7:07 PM. Thank you.